Now.
Hello and welcome to the June 4 meeting of the Asheville Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Thank you all for joining us in our alternate home on the sixth floor conference room. We will begin with a roll call. Commissioner Zuyevsky.
Hello.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Present.
Vice Chair Greiner.
Present.
Commissioner Seigel.
Present.
Commissioner Rell.
Present.
And Chair Barton. Commissioner Faircough is absent. First item on our administrative agenda, as we always do, is confirm our land acknowledgements. So I'll read, as we are gathering today as the Planning and Zoning Commission, the body tasked with reviewing and advising on appropriate land use in the city of Asheville, it is fitting to acknowledge the storied history of this land. We occupy the land of the Cherokee people who have stewered it and been in relationship with these mountains and waterways from time immemorial. This land is occupied through violence, oppression, coercion, broken treaties, and forced relocation. Please join me in expressing respect and gratitude for the present day Eastern Band of Cherokee, the Cherokee Nation, the United Gidooa Band of Cherokee, and all of our indigenous neighbors, as well as the past and present marginalized community members, as we seek to join in the healing of the invaluable trauma that is embedded in this land. Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of minutes from our last meeting, May 7. Any comments, questions, clarification? I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to check it first.
Second. We have a motion.
A second.
A motion and a second. I'll ask, when we vote tonight, let's raise our hands, just so the video catches it. All those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Opposed, standing over there.
So as a point of clarification, even if you don't attend a meeting, you are able to vote, like if you wish to abstain.
Right, because you can always read the minutes and say you're right, but that's okay.
So motion carries. Next up, updates from committee liaisons and work groups. Are there any, I guess, I'll start by saying there is a City of Asheville Leadership Summit for Advisory Boards on June 16 that I will be attending for. It's for vice chairs and chairs of the advisory boards as they reboot normal operations. I'd be happy to report back on that to our July meeting, but if there's any messages or things that anyone in the commission would like to carry for that meeting. But now, all of the communication. Have there been any other workgroup meetings or multimodal, does that resume? Missionary?
No, multimodal is not.
I was asked if I could speak up too, again, it's coming through, okay? It's just volume is kind of a reason this slides out.
All right, if everybody can use their outside voices.
The flood plain and stormwater work group is just continuing to do our review of all the plans. There are many, twenty-five, something like that, so we will report out next time.
Thank you. Moving into our, on the anti-displacement working group, I'll provide a quick update there. We're really primarily focused on making a clear definition of what displacement is as currently, when conversations are had, it's mainly around the physical displacement of people and not inclusive of cultural impact or economic impact. So we're really working to refine that definition to bring forward for kind of larger discussion within the commission. That being said, it's really timely and important because there's some discussion, for instance, with the businesses of South Slope about requesting a social district. And, you know, Southside United has been clearly recognized as, you know, including what's now called South Slope. And that would fall under, many of the accepted definitions of displacement would be not acknowledging the history of urban renewal along what's now called South Slope and how that may impact residents and displace culture in that part of our city. So it's kind of ongoing and also, like, important based on what we're hearing in the community. Thanks, yeah, thank you for that report back. We've also, as a follow-up, I think, to our last month's discussion, we have requested presentations on the city's affordable housing plan. I think that's in the works. And maybe as the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee gets kind of rebooted, there'll be a presentation to that body. And then also, maybe July, maybe August, we're going to, we've started coordinating with staff. And in addition, you know, we have started scheduling our Planning and Zoning Commission retreat. And several commissioners have identified anti-displacement as a good topic to delve into. So look forward to that. We've also extended an invitation for the chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to join us at the retreat to kind of facilitate some of his work around anti-displacement. And then Commissioner Zuyevsky, do you want to talk a little bit about Legacy Neighborhoods Coalition? We talked a little bit at our last meeting around formalizing your liaison role. I know we're not there yet.
Yeah, so I did bring that question to the LNC meeting last month when we met. May, right, yeah. And they really liked the idea and, you know, had questions around, like, what have it looked like? And I think that would be a collaborative effort between LNC and PNC. They did conclude by saying that they are interested and they would like to ask that the chair of PNC be the official liaison for, like, continuity's sake, so it's not a person-specific role, but it's a...
Position.
Position, thank you. So if you are open to that, you did bring it up, so careful what you ask for, I guess.
Yeah, no, happy, I think strengthening that bond and kind of allowing a place to listen there and report back here would be something I'd be happy to participate in.
Yeah, so they, they are, they are working more on, I don't want to call it a strategic plan because it's probably not that, but they're really working on figuring out who they are as a collective. So working on being proactive rather than reactive. So I think we'll need to carve out time for a discussion of, like, what that liaison role looks like. So there was no time for that kind of discussion, but that would be forthcoming.
Great, I'll look forward to progress and more. Anything else before we move on to public hearings? Great. We have two public hearings up tonight as a reminder. We will accept public comment only on the items listed on the agenda. For all the people here tonight, they'll have three minutes to speak, or if there's a group, ten minutes. First up, we have a zoning map amendment, a request to rezone property located at 99999 Trade Street from River Arts Form District Neighborhood Transition, RAD NT, to residential multifamily medium density RM8. The property is identified with and on the agenda. And the property owner is Brumos LLC. Applicant's contact is Mr. Poe Carpenter and the planner coordinating review is Will Pomless. Mr. Pomless?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, commissioners, full pop, this is Penner, but it's not. I'll be presenting from here if this works okay for everyone. So this is a straight rezoning request for property without an address, 99999 Trade Street, from the existing zoning, River Arts Form District Neighborhood Transition, to residential multifamily RM8. Quick facts on the property, including that's a straight rezoning request. It's about a quarter acre in size and SNAP recommends approval of the rezoning request. Here you can see the location of the map in the River Arts District, the overview on the left, and then the post-in on the right. This is the subject property as currently that in Buckingham County's PIS records. As we noted in pre-meeting, applicant has presented a deed that shows that this unidentified portion to the east of the property is actually a second tract on that deed associated with this property, I mean, the same pin and deed, book and page numbers. So it'll effectively rezone this portion of land that is under the same ownership and property as was shown in the red outline here. You can see some of the surrounding uses, including to the west, which is a former church, as shown on the aerial imagery here, but it's now being developed in townhomes, which you can kind of see with these re revised property lines shown here. Here's the map of the existing zoning. You can see the outline for the RAD Neighborhood Transition District that kind of would surround here and borders up against the residential multifamily medium density for the east. The proposed zoning would change that boundary line and include subject property into the RM8 instead of the RAD NT. There's also, should have been a future land use map, I guess we'll get to that. Just looking used to this new presentation format. This chart breaks down some of the key differences between the RAD NT and the RM8 districts. Probably the most important ones are the allowed uses between the two districts. So the RAD NT allows for a variety of multifamily-type residential uses, but it's not allowed for single-family, two-family uses, whereas the RM8 does allow for those two land uses as well as other private residential uses. Overall, the RAD, the RM8 allows for more density as calculated based on these metrics. However, the structure size of any individual structure is limited in the RM8, whereas it's not limited in the RAD. Building height in the RAD, it's four stories, or in cases where the bus RM8 zoning is three stories. There are also some form code differences between the two districts where RAD NT is a form code and the RM8 is not. Based on the revised park requirements, the RAD NT does not require parking for residential uses and most other uses as well. The RM8 is still under the standard park requirements of one space per unit, typically for units with two or fewer bedrooms. The RAD NT also has a more robust bike parking requirement, including for short and long-term bicycle parking spaces. It has a build-to zone requirement, where the front edge of a site must be occupied by seventy percent as built, and has transparency and window requirements, also sidewalk requirements, whereas the RM8 only has requirements for developments of more than twenty units. So go through some of the consistency analysis. Here's a map of the zoning again. The existing zoning showed, shown with the property outline in black. SNAP finds that the rezoning request would be compatible with the surrounding zoning districts that is adjacent to the RM8 already. It talks the RM8 purpose as outlined here, talking about being a transitional area between higher density, single-family, multifamily uses, and other non-residential uses. In regards to the future land use review, our future land use, the property is traditional neighborhood. This rezoning request is consistent with that, the future land use category of traditional neighborhood, which talks about a variety of housing types, such as single-family, accessory uses, duplexes, townhomes, small family apartments, all seamlessly located together. Infrastructure analysis is not applicable, this is not conditional zoning projects. There's no site lands or project proposal associated with it, it's just a straight rezoning. And SNAP also finds consistency with the request with the comprehensive plan, including the roles and strategies, I mean, the livable built environment theme, wanting to increase and diversify the housing supply by promoting zoning policies encouraging more housing, and to celebrate the unique identity of neighborhoods through creative placemaking by continuing to support intellectually appropriate peaceful development and a variety of housing types. So SNAP has identified a pro of the, of the proposed rezoning. It would rezone consistently with the neighboring RM8 zoning district, which is what the larger We Cane Neighbors mostly zone to. There are a few cons associated with the rezoning as well that SNAP has identified. The first one being it is, is a reduction in diversity of allowed land uses. RM8 does allow for a single-family, two-family, but the RAD NT does allow for a number of neighborhoods serving retail and kind of small-scale uses like that. It also removes those form code considerations from this property, like the transparency, sidewalks, sort of the build-to area as well. And finally, it does kind of shift that geography of the abutting RM8 closer to the other RAD districts, talked about that a little bit in pre-meeting. So basically, those properties now, directly to the west and the north of the subject property, would be limited to three stories in height because they would now become adjacent to RM8, whereas they are not today. SNAP does recommend approval of the rezoning request from the RAD NT to the RM8 districts. It is reported this evening, it is technically scheduled for a city council hearing due June 24. May I ask you any questions you may have? Yes?
So on the pros and cons, you listed the one pro, which kind of reads as neutral to me. It's consistent with an adjacent zoning. And three cons, some of them, which seem possibly could be kind of large. And so I'm just curious as to how you guys came to the, the suggestion to, to approve.
Sure. So you're correct that there are, might appear the cons outweigh the pros just on that, on that one slide. You know, looking at it, I guess, a little more broadly and looking at the site and the parcel itself, you know, being a relatively small site that doesn't have a lot of opportunity to maybe be a more mixed-use, denser kind of development to the RAD NT price, it's trying to envision. Also, Trade Street being such a narrow street, not really infrastructure to serve a development, such as that SNAP felt that RM8 would be in some ways, not, maybe not better fit, but just as good of a fit on that, on that property, given the constraints that it currently has. And unlocking its potential by allowing for single-family and duplex, for example, might be, might be the highest use of that property.
So it might be a better fit, is what you're saying? RM8 might be a better fit than what it's actually doing?
Right, when it comes down to...
When it comes down to the constraints of the...
Yes.
Could, so the adjacent properties, you talk about shifting of the geography of, of the adjacent allowable use, basically, it's now shifting, those adjacent properties can now only go up to a maximum of three stories.
Correct.
Correct? And the RM8 has a maximum of forty feet?
Correct.
So could this, could, is there, is this considered some sort of, or could it be considered some sort of downzoning of the adjacent parcels?
Not sure they consider downzoning.
You're limiting, it's limiting the development potential of those adjacent parcels. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is I know the townhomes are going in, but the, you know, what if those get bought out and someone wants to do something there? Or, right, land gets given back from the I-26 project in that small parcel, then what if they get the opportunity to expand? All that's right now, that's DOT right away, right? What if they get an opportunity to expand there?
Right.
And a multi-family development goes in there? They're now restricted to three stories instead of four?
Yeah, depending on the kind of geometry of that.
Geometry, right.
Parcels, parcels, yeah.
There could be, I mean, we have to, we have to anticipate all the potential geometries, right?
Correct. Yeah, no, that's, that's why SNAP raised that point is, you know, today on the ground might not have a huge impact based on what's existing and what's area of construction in the area. But this true that, for instance, if there was, you know, property left over in this area and it's somehow combined with this property, and it was all one big property, it would be adjacent to that RM8 and be limited to three stories. Three stories and forty-five feet in height adjacent to the RM8. So it doesn't, doesn't necessarily change, whether it's downzoning or not is a tricky question. Doesn't, either uses or anything else like that, but it does, it does kind of reduce the maximum size of that property.
Let's say it's not downzoning in the sense of the Senate Bill 382. It declares that when you do a new zoning, a new, like, zoning amendment, that you're downzoning. It's, so the use is still allowed in the same, probably those properties will have to come in for the CZ to maybe ask for higher, you know, limit or less of a buffer or something that you see sometimes, and, but I would not call it a, like a, making it a downzoning that's precluded by that law. It's an impact.
It is an impact, I mean, it is an impact. I mean, it could potentially reduce the economic outcome or development use of that parcel in the, in the future.
Yeah, and that will also, and it'll also depend on what in the future properties, if they got created for zones, they might not be zoned on RAD NT, they might be zoned something else that doesn't have that...
Have that revision, okay.
So only if it was zoned on RAD NT, you know, but there are other districts too, like highway business and other commercial districts require landscape buffers adjacent to RM and RS. So name a commercial district like that, maybe adjacent, at least where this RM8 parcel might be now. Would it have to have a landscape buffer where it wouldn't necessarily be adjacent to RAD NT like it is today? So, yeah, there are, yeah, there are different considerations like that going on.
I mean, it feels like clean boundary to me, like, it seems like it makes sense. I just wanted to dig into that, those potential downstream impacts.
Right, yeah, so those are very real considerations.
If there was land added to it from DOT, would it stay the same zone?
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe there's a better, a better zoning district for it, maybe it's a more mixed-use corridor kind of district because it's, you know, it's adjacent to the RAD, maybe it's, I don't know, it's hard to say what it would become, but it might not necessarily be RAD NT. It's not, you know, the RAD proper. I have to study on that.
It's also topographical constraints though, that's the side of a hill. I mean, that, if the, if you have a topo there, like, the property to the north of it there, that grade is like forty feet below the interstate.
Right.
Like, that's not, that's a hole. It looks like it's flat, but that's a hole. Like, you could almost jump from the interstate down onto that property because it's such a steep fall. Like, there's many constraints to that site. I mean, without getting into setbacks, heights, as it abuts the adjacent property, like, that's a very constrained parcel of land, just based on nature, so.
Do we know how tall the townhomes are going to be?
Could find out, I don't know off the top of my head. You know, it's by the way, their name, it's London Construction, it's a couple of stories.
But their grandfather didn't...
Yeah, no, they're, they're approved, and all one and a half, I think. Two stories, we can certainly find out though.
The RAD, the RAD NT, the old church there is, it was grandfathered in as townhomes.
That's new construction now, for, for townhomes.
Perfect.
Any other questions, clarification to the staff before we make the applicant speak? The applicant might say anything? Should we just accompany him to the radio chair this evening?
Yeah.
Here, there?
Yeah.
Hello.
It's service.
Sure. My name, this is really weird.
I know. You were probably more used to standing up there.
Oh, welcome back over here. My name's Derek Allen, I'm with Allen, Stoll, and Philborn. Pinch hitting from a law partner, Poe Carpenter, who represents the applicant here. The applicant has been involved in that townhome project, and this project needed to be single-family residences, and the RAD NT doesn't allow that. In addition to that, and I should have pushed back some on that listing of pros-cons, because I think if you go through, I've got a whole bunch of complaining pieces where we could pull them out. But diversifying the housing stock was listed as a con, and actually, I think it should be a pro here because you can do the single-family residences in the RAD NT. Also, this lot is less than a hundred feet wide, which is the minimum width for a RAD NT project. So automatically, you've got a non-conforming issue that I'm going to talk to Will and Janice about how we would even do that. So to me, that natural break line, this is one of the ones where you look at the existing zoning, you're like, why did it go there? That really doesn't make a lot of sense, the rest of the street, the single-family residences. And I think that you hit it, you know, around the top of the head with, this seems like the natural break line. And that's the way the market is, is going. And to Jared's point, that, that steep climb in the back, if you've ever done the steps, one of that pedestrian bridge, I mean, it's a workout, so it's, it's really steep there. I don't think that's realistic, and those townhomes are not going to be forced to worry and they're already under construction. So I think that is the questions I heard. I'm happy to talk about it, but I think this is kind of, well, there's no brain-rolling where we can add two more houses to, to the neighborhood and we'll move on.
One question I have is on the rezoning application, and then Will's presentation listed .27 acres, is that inclusive of tract two or would it go up?
I don't know, but we can figure that out before we get to council for sure. I'll find it out from that one. Call ahead.
Not super material, but .27 is just shy of 12,000 square feet. And given that there's 4,000 square foot minimum lot size, it gets up there to house if that's anticipated by the developer.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you from, from this survey, the .27 is just that tract two, so it doesn't include the other parcel that goes with it.
And tract one, is the sliver...
Well, in this survey, tract one would have been where the townhomes are going, and tract two is, is where the single-family houses are going. And that's probably why this thing was put into RAD NT to begin with, because of common ownership by the church.
Wouldn't you say it has to be a single-family home, so...
In terms of the development, it's just what, what fits for that particular lot. Otherwise, we're going to be trying to figure out how to put a, you know, some kind of allowed, you know, apartment complex on a lot that's not wide enough to do it under the RAD NT terms.
And are there any... Do you have additional tracks that isn't...
I don't know, I'm sure there are some easements that we own there for utilities, but I don't seem to think here that, that has jumped out, I'm not looking at, but I have the reported, reported by for it.
Any other questions with the applicant? No. No open public comment at five forty-three. Stand by nine, or close public comment at five forty-three.
I can just add to, uh, plug the plans for that, um, project. They actually are, the applicant is using that version, I guess, and look that way when I went by, and I haven't looked at the plans before, so, um, so we're basically the same height as the street, which is comparable to a two-story building.
Cool.
Any other questions, comments, deliberations? Not all entertaining questions.
I move to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property located at nine-nine-nine-nine-nine, Trade Street, from River Arts Form District, Neighborhood Transition, Rad NT to residential multifamily, medium density RM eight. We find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one promotes zoning policies to encourage more housing, and two supports contextual appropriate infill development and a variety of housing types.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please raise your hand to the right, all those in favor, stand by. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one.
Our next and final public hearing item on the agenda is a zoning text amendment. We have a request to consider a proposed zoning text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Seven of National Code of Ordinances, to reinsert sections seven dash eleven dash three, C, D, E, and F, which were inadvertently removed during the recent zoning text amendment adopted in ordinance number five-one-two-seven. Planner coordinating review is Will Palmquist.
Mr. Palmquist. Good evening, again, commissioners. So this is a, this is a zoning text amendment request to clean up an error made during the last round of zoning text amendments. It's ordinance number fifty-one and seventy-two, sections removed accidentally, and to restore those sections, and staff recommends approval. So back on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, as you recall, staff reported a series of text amendments. One of those was to the project threshold levels for one, two, and three, level one, two, and three projects. It also included changes to vacancy triggers for level one, site plan review, full site compliance, and also sidewalk requirements. And those were, those vacancy triggers were removed from those types of requirements. Basically, what happened when staff drafted the ordinance and the final adopted version removed or replaced the sidewalk requirement section, but only stopped with the replace language, adding that vacancy portion, and grabbed to add in sections C, V, E, and F that deals with other considerations for when sidewalks are required, like for vacancy lower than five hundred vehicles a day, and most importantly, fee and lieu section was, was not being inserted into that. So this amendment would restore those sections that were inadvertently removed during that ordinance fifty-one twenty-seven, while retaining the intended change to not require new sidewalks when the use of building has ceased for a period of more than a hundred and eighty days. This zoning text amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that it makes streets more walkable, comfortable, effective by promoting zoning policies, which would say to encourage more housing, which would say by, by constructing use more sidewalks, also to enhance the safety of the public realm by constructing a test facility that enhances test safety. Pro of this proposed amendment is that it would reinsert the language to clarify when new sidewalk construction is required and when the payment of fee and lieu sidewalk construction may be administered. No cons have been identified. Staff recommends approval of this zoning text amendment. It is reported this evening with a tentative city council hearing date of June twenty-fourth. And if I answer any questions, may I have?
Thank you, Mr. Palmquist. Any questions for staff?
On the fee and lieu, uh, portion, was any debate had around including additional options to receive fee and lieu?
No, we did not consider any revisions to that section, basically just wholesale, putting back what was there before.
This is kind of excited me because I, when reviewing it, the fee and lieu section is written in such a manner that it essentially tries to put sidewalks in, and sometimes what we have before us are, um, an opportunity where a sidewalk isn't necessarily a public benefit, doesn't connect to adjacent properties well. Um, for instance, I'm thinking of the, I can't remember the address, but on Swaminella River Road or across from Swaminella River Road, we approved a two-hundred-human apartment complex that had, it was like a small, small portion of sidewalk that was maybe only fifty feet long, and it was, um, I want to say it was like adjacent to a bridge abutment. And so as part of the CZ, we removed the requirement for the sidewalk, but because of the way the fee and lieu is written, we couldn't receive the fee and lieu of the sidewalk. So we forewent the sidewalk as part of the condition, but didn't get the public benefit of what would be a fee for that sidewalk. So that, to me, was like one of these catch twenty-twos where we have the right to exclude the sidewalk, but we didn't have the right to be like, you're removing it. And so I guess, like, if I had something to say about this, or my comment would be like, maybe adding a stipulation that a fee and lieu could be, um, accepted if it was either approved as part of the conditions of approval of this board, um, or, and the other thing we do in the video is quite a bit is at the, um, like, uh, at the direction of the director of planning and urban design. So I think it has seven potential requirements that would allow for a fee and lieu to be utilized, and I would like to hear if other folks feel like this board may be able to request the fee and lieu instead of just excluding sidewalks, the conditions on, because we already received kind of the fee and lieu for trees, and it seems like sidewalks are logical to have there.
Only during this, that were you, not changing the word?
Um, yeah, the wording would be, I can pull up the exact markup here, but I think it would be like number eight. It stops currently at number seven. But would be, you know, um, if, if mutually agreed during the conditional rezoning process, something to that effect.
I need to get back from staff on that. Thanks for highlighting that, because I do remember that being kind of a weird loophole or anything.
Yeah, I should have looked up the address, but it was a big apartment complex with a lot of investment.
London Road apartment.
Yeah, the London, it's the London Road apartment, and a big component of that is like an existing building on the corner where we wanted a, um, a bus stop. And there's no connectivity along Sweeten Creek.
Right.
And so there was connectivity where you could move pedestrians along London Road, but not Sweeten Creek. And so, I mean, look, it's to the benefit of the developer that they don't have to pay a fee and they don't have to provide a sidewalk, but from the public's perspective, connectivity at that intersection, we had a lot of public comment around like traffic congestion, you know, that, um, it's a, it's, I think it's only formally like a four-way, but there's another connection around a convenience store at Sweeten Creek that comes into that area that kind of makes it a five-way intersection. And so just like any little amount, if you read like the way the fee and lieu money is supposed to be sent, spent, that would have been a great opportunity to take back for like signalized pedestrian crosswalk or additional signage or, you know, I think there were opportunities to, uh, improve the public benefit of this city with that Start with Janice. Can we, like, we can?
I'm trying to remember why, what the advice may have been, that you can't, so, we used to have people saying, we'll give you money to build affordable housing, and we'd say, we can't make that part. Well, instead of building affordable housing, we'll give you money to go into the housing trust fund. And legal had advised that that could not be put into the conditions, and instead we did it outside, donation agreement outside the conditional zoning process. This doesn't give me as much concern because it is, it is a fee that we already, it's, it's a fee that is related to something that is clearly part of zoning. You know, the question about affordable housing, is that even really a relevant factor in the zoning? And you're, you're right, it's a conditional zoning, so if they agree to it, and they realize and they're getting that too, then, but then you have to realize, if they don't agree to it, I guess you, you could just say, well, I think we should get fee too. But if it's worded the way you, you're mentioning it, I think we can say.
The condition is, in lieu of the sidewalk, you can opt for the fee and lieu option.
In a conditional, if in a, if in a conditional zone.
Right.
So the whole reason that that fee and lieu has these particular, you know, you can only ask for a fee and lieu in these particular cases is because you can't make it just openly discretionary. You can't say.
Right.
Well, I think we'll let them have a fee and lieu and we won't let them have. But if we keep it to, but in the case of a conditional zoning where you're asking to not, again, the wording is kind of alluding me, but asking to not have to meet sidewalk requirements, that, uh, you could still make it a condition, a requested condition, to pay the fee and lieu.
I think that's exactly it. It empowers the city to be able to ask the question. You know, whereas currently, this developer could say, well, I can't do it, and then the city can't say, would you propose a fee and lieu condition, um, for not doing the sidewalk that would be required under the rest of the speed or something.
Yeah. It helps you anticipate it, although I, I do think if it came up during a conditional zoning, probably on the fly, legal might say, well, I don't know if we can do that. But when you give a heads up to it, then it's like, yeah, that could be something that they could be considering.
And we have the fees and charges manual, so that's clearly defined. Like, it's before they show up, before anyone shows up, if we know within the conditions it's being requested to remove the sidewalk, it's also, you know, sometimes folks say like, they don't know what it costs, or they have to go back and look.
Oh, right.
This is like a really clearly defined, kind of like, oh, yes, we mutually agree to the fees and charges. Like, it's a public document that anyone can look at and understand.
Right. And what everybody else should understand about fee and lieu, it has to be used, that money has to be used in the, is that the one that says in the vicinity? So as you're saying, that area that you're mentioning, that specific example, the money would have had to be used in that area after our improvements, sidewalk. I think it's broader than just sidewalks, like street.
It is, it is, yeah.
Sidewalks or other pedestrian.
Okay, so.
And that's something I think that, you know, gives a lot of agency to, to like,
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
you know, call it multimodal transportation, if they understand that there's a broad public concern, like specifically at that intersection, I remember, I think at the city council meeting, somebody had brought like a filmed video that was highly edited, like showing different parts of the day and how much was going on, like near misses with vehicles, it was, um, yeah, I, I just liked the passion I saw about protection and safety and everything.
Is the sidewalk fee and lieu administrator the city transportation director?
Transportation director.
So maybe our recommendation could be that, you know, if we, if we are voting to recommend approval of this, that an additional trigger in the fee and lieu gets forward, city transportation director to have a conditional.
Yeah, that's something we're working towards.
And I was thinking, because it's adding an option instead of taking something away, that you could add it to the proposed text amendment. And then it will go up to council with that, and then with review of the transportation director. So, I might not have the language perfect, but we could say, as, as discussed, it will come up with something, and I think we've got, unless you want to try to.
Just want to run the risk of having this kind of get drawn out, and the city council like continue it, and meanwhile, we don't have any fee and lieu, so we can't administer fee and lieu today until council approves this decision. That'd be all my concern is there's other.
That there might be questions about, oh, well, that's a point.
The city council has continued for an entire month until end of July meeting, and we're without fee and lieu. So I know staff, and I think if this council are not speaking for him, I just want to make sure we get it like back in there as was and as easy as possible, because I.
Why would they have to continue it?
I don't know, I'm just saying, I just don't know.
If there are questions.
I think it's, if there's any concerns, then we might not be anticipating not having a chance to really delve into it. I, I don't know.
A question for you, Will, is, you know, we, because we're talking about it earlier on the, on the committee hall, you were going to say, these are, do you think this would verge out of the report?
Yeah, potentially, um, if slight policy change, it's a little gray area. Yes, that was just pretending this is just, yeah, fixing a clerical error for the most part. So if we expand the scope of it, maybe it changes what it is a little bit, um, which has, has merit, and there's definitely something worth pursuing here, because that London Road project was frustrating for the reasons that we've been discussing. Yeah, I would just, I'm just worried that if there's any kind of complication and things have to get continued, and then we're without this language for longer. I know there's a lot of, a lot of folks in the city staff that are a little bit nervous about not having this language available without us, not having fee and lieu as an actual option right now.
I might really have an opinion per se, but also adding that, um, council's going to be a happy, but there's, there's a path where we might be able to get resources to do the substantial, overall, in short term, which is very exciting and still clearly not yet. That's something I know people have wanted to do for a long time, so that's something to put that out there, like, we've been approaching, approaching the changes in the video, which people want, but I've seen this year, we're just in the process, we're not necessarily going through the, you know, the, you know, so, I don't know, yeah, that has to do with this conversation, but I keep thinking about it as we're talking about this, and what that implies for us to go. So that's really like, maybe.
Can we do two separate motions?
You could do a recommendation. I was just saying that I don't think from an advertising perspective that this needs to come back through planning and zoning to add in that either, either a proposed additional text amendment, which council could go up to council and council could say, no, that's too much of a change, we just want to do what, what was there. If it, if it was, or you could do the recommendation route, which is with a recommendation to look into this, but then I think it would, it wouldn't be able to go right up to council, I don't think, with that, without the wording amendment, if that makes sense.
Without approving that. Next.
Well, a recommenda, what Jeffrey said, Mr. Barton said, you know, maybe a recommendation to discuss that with the engineer, traffic engineer, but that would still be delaying, I think, at that particular text amendment for another time.
Right. I think that's.
I mean, is there a sense that this already went to, are you saying it went to a discussion of this text?
No, it was the chair meeting, just preparing for a meeting.
Okay.
There might be other changes that the, you know, a lot of that was on me that we're not even aware of, so.
Oh, that's true, but this one just came up. But again, it's always council's option to say, not at this time, and we've done that before, that, that has happened before, that it's too much of a change, not just, just put the change into, I don't think it would stop it necessarily from just implementing what's already there.
This seems pretty simple, and I do want to make the point, it's come up more. This seems pretty simple, and I do want to make the point, it's come up more than this London Road, that was the most recent, but it's come up in several prior CZs.
Yeah. I do agree, maybe it's a little bit of a gray area, whether it's just cleanup or not, but it did, to me, it's almost like cleanup because it's closing a loophole that was just like an unforeseen miss.
If it was a completely, a change that was doing something more regulatory, adding something regulatory that wasn't advertised, I would say that you couldn't add it at this point, but it's not. It's sort of opening up another option for clarifying when you could pay the fee.
I've suggested language with, we need language recommended.
Sure.
So it would just be, A, the removal of sidewalk requirements is mutually agreed to be removed, or is mutually agreed upon as part of a conditional rezoning.
So the beginning sentence is something like, you can do, get, pay a fee-in lieu, and then it goes to A.
It goes to a bunch of paragraphs, so this would just be, all the other ones are reasons why, so it says the sidewalk, so this would be the removal of sidewalk requirements is mutually agreed upon as part of a conditional reason.
I think so.
That seems really straightforward, and to clarify, that would be in addition to section 7-11-8, adding the, correct.
I think we can present that in the way that we are, like, enabling the fee-in lieu with sidewalk. I think we can present it as a closure in place, so.
Shall we open? Any other questions, clarifications, or staff before we open public comment? All right. Open public comment at 6:05. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Stand by nine. Close public comment at 6:05. Any more deliberation? Mr. Mayor will be, I'm sorry, yeah.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed wording amendment to Chapter 7 of the Asheville Code of Ordinances, and find, including the recommended language in this meeting, and find that the proposed amendments are reasonable, are in the public interest, and are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meet the development needs of the community, and that the amendment will, one, make streets more walkable, comfortable, and connected by eliminating gaps in the citywide sidewalk network, and, two, enhance the safety of the public realm by constructing pedestrian facilities that enhance pedestrian safety.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And if possible, if you request that you kind of just share that, in case the recording is murky, please share the language that you stated with staff. That concludes all the items on our agenda.
I had a question of staff, if I may. I probably should know this, but I just wanted some clarity of where the legacy neighborhood overlay stood, that whole conversation.
I don't know, we updates the chair at this point.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Here's, here's what I'll share, you know, we are working through, we, the city, not just planning urban design, but working through the year-one goals of the Affordable Housing Plan. A lot of those, which this commission recommended approval of, council adopted in March, those were zoning tools that were recommended to reduce regulatory barriers and things like that. There are a lot of things that are not zoning-based, you all pretty set this before, that go into anti-displacement and maybe for stability, that are in that year-one plan of the Affordable Housing Plan. So when you see coming soon, council's going to hear about what we're, these work plan goals are, and things for the city. I don't want to turn that into, but obviously, it's going to include year-one goals of the Affordable Housing Plan, since that happened right before the storm. So those measures that are outside of regulatory control to help with urban stability and anti-displacement are going to be moving forward as part of a project in the city. And I know that, tying that back to the beginning of the meeting, Chair Barton, you mentioned the press for a presentation from our affordable housing committee. That's in the hopper as well, and who else we in touch with? Sasha Potinsky, our affordable housing officer, who works directly, to get that going. And I think that we can shed a little more light on that.
That presentation will be really helpful in our July meeting, so we hear it before the.
Yeah, Sasha hasn't yet, she would be helpful in July, that should work, so, yeah. Throw it on the floor, see. Thank you. No, I didn't double-check the survey. I think we had a couple folks that have responded yet, so if you haven't responded yet, please do, I'll check tomorrow and follow up, and then we'll take the place held, yes.
All right, that concludes our business for June for planning and zoning meeting. Our next meeting is July 2, 5 o'clock, in the Newland Court downstairs.
It's July 2?
Yeah.
Thanks, we are going.